Welcome to the Wareham Planning Board Meeting of Monday, April 14, 2025, being convened in the Multi-Service Center, Room 520, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Massachusetts, and being broadcast by Zoom and Wareham Media. I'm going to begin with a roll call attendance, starting to my left.
Mike Baptiste here.
Jane Gleason here.
Julie Moran here.
Sam Corbett here.
And the Chair, Carl Schultz, is here. We have a full board. We have a quorum. The meeting is called to order at 6:00. The first item of business is approval of minutes from March 24. Did Mike get a chance to see them?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody's comfortable?
Yep.
All right. Discussion? First, I'll take a motion, and then we can discuss.
Motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion to accept by Mr. Corbett, a second by Julie Moran. Discussion? Hearing none. Looking for a vote, starting again to my left. We're accepting the minutes.
Mike Baptiste. Aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Acceptance of the minutes passes by a roll call vote 500. First item, or the next item, is 2-25, Plan 25-3, Bourne Cove Road Nominee Trust, A&R, 23 Bourne Point Road. Speaking before the board, we have... Thank you.
Good evening. Brad Bertolo with J.C. Engineering.
Mr. Bertolo, if you could stand, you're an engineer, going to make professional testimony. Do you swear the truth? The testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Thank you so much. Could you spell your name for the record?
Bertolo. B-E-R-T-O-L-O.
And you're representing the applicant, and you're from?
J.C. Engineering.
J.C. Engineering. Thank you so much. So if you could make your opening presentation.
This project is located on Bourne Point Road. It's currently an existing, about 3.8-acre lot. Currently has a single-family dwelling, driveway, garage, septic system. Lot has about 25 feet of frontage. It's more than adequate to allow the creation of a second lot. This property is located in the R60 zoning district, requires 60,000 square feet of land and 180 feet of frontage. We are proposing a lot with, a new lot with 248 feet of frontage. The existing lot will maintain 277 feet of frontage on Bourne Point Road. The existing lot has 97,980 square feet, while the new lot would have just over 63,000, meeting the minimum requirements. We do provide the shape factor, and clearly evident, it meets the requirements for the shape factor.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
So is it a little bit different than what's on this drawing? You said 245?
Forty-eight. Forty-eight. Two forty-eight.
Yeah, 248 is what's on here.
Yeah, that's what I thought that's what he did say.
Okay. And then you said 277?
Oh, for the existing house lot.
Existing. Oh, okay.
That's what we're remaining.
Oh, okay. For frontage. All right. Got it. Thank you.
Sam? Julie?
Yep.
Okay, so my question is for either the Land years Coordinator or the Town Planner. Just to note, Mr. Buckland is on Zoom. Is, given the way it's annotated on the plan, it's a 10-foot wide paved traveled way, is Bourne Point Road an accepted way by the town?
Says private on the plan.
It can be an accepted way, even if it's a private road. Has the town denoted this an accepted way?
No, it has not accepted Bourne Point Road as an accepted way.
So just a question again. My understanding, frontage needs to be on an accepted way. Is that correct?
Unless you find that there's suitable width grade in construction of the private way.
Okay.
Yes.
So, okay, so then my question back to Mr. Bertolo is, it says it's only a 10-foot wide traveled way, even though there's a 50-foot wide layout. How much of that is paved?
It's all paved.
All 50 feet is paved?
No, no, the traveled surface.
Oh, I'm sorry. The 10 feet is straight?
Yes.
Is that adequate for the fire department access?
I drove down to LA. It didn't seem any issues with me. It's got a pretty open area. The pavement's in good condition.
Yes. So in the past, we've required for an adequate way to be wide enough, 16 feet, I think, is the minimum for the town, correct? That we've accepted, and it needs to have?
In the precedent, you've said as a board before, you've done 16 feet as a minimum width of paved way.
Right. And then we went through and laid out the substrate and the top coat, and so in the opinion of the town, is this an adequate way, or do we need to get input from the fire department and?
Well, it's actually under the opinion of the board, is the way the state law reads.
Okay, so I'm asking for your advice, for consistency. I know, for example, with Shellpoint, was it Shellpoint? I think we, they went back and they resurfaced the road, met all the minimum conditions, and we can resurrect all those conditions.
Yes, I think the standard is that you either find this as a subdivision, or you find that there's suitable width grade in construction of the way. In this case, though, you can also negotiate with the proponent to find this as an A&R if the paved way is expanded to the minimum that you require.
Which is what we did in the past, so we either had them withdraw, or we told the application while they worked on getting the way to meet the standards. Is that, that's what we've done in the past?
That's correct.
Okay. Would you be willing to do that? I can get you the standards we set out.
We can't condition a Form A.
We can deny, well, we did in the past. We did.
We did, but it's not right. We're not supposed to do that.
I understand that, but?
I'd rather go down and do a site visit, because...
Okay, then the only option we have is to deny it.
Well?
For a lack of inadequate way. We can't, we have 21 days to act.
When does it come in, Jake?
No, it came in, when was it stamped in? A week ago? It's been in for a bit, right?
It's been in for a while.
Yeah.
Fourteen.
Yeah, so we're well into the 21 days. So either we can negotiate, we can toll the application, or he can withdraw it without prejudice, or we deny it.
Today's the fourteenth. Stamp the fourteenth.
Oh, is it? I got, it came in, I don't know.
Stamp the fourteenth.
Okay, I got it a week and a half ago.
Yeah, the clerk stamped it at 5:19.
So we have 21 days, but they're not going to get the road built by then. So do you remember that we did this for Shellpoint Lane, and they went back and resurfaced the road, and we let them come back? If you don't want to do that, that's fine.
No, we don't. I think we're setting a bad precedent, and we've been lied to before, and nope.
Okay. I don't think in that case we were lied to. We told the application, they went back, they resurfaced the road. Mr. Cudaro went out and inspected the road. The fire department went out and confirmed that it met their conditions. So we have two, if you don't want to do that option?
This is a private way, so I don't have...
You have to have frontage.
I have frontage for this, but...
Not on the adequate?
I've seen over numerous lots going back to get back to, you know, where the roadway is wider.
I, Ken, or Josh, if it doesn't have an adequate way, we can't grant the A&R. Is that correct? If we find that that's not?
If you find that there's not an adequate width grade in construction of the private way, then you have to find this as a subdivision and deny it as an A&R.
Okay, or we could let them go and fix the road and come back.
Yeah, that's not, I don't think that's even allowable at this time, because we only have, we own this portion. We don't own this way, we don't own that way. It's used by a number of homes right now already.
But it's not inadequate. Okay, so, okay, we've made our position clear. I'm looking, any further discussion? You understand the discussion and the board's opinion. So I am looking, and?
Motion to deny?
Because it doesn't have an adequate, frontage on an adequate way.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to Mr. Baptiste, second by Mr. Corbett. Discussion?
You don't really have a choice.
Yeah.
Well, again, with the other time, we kind of worked with the applicant, they had control of the full road, they were able to?
Yeah, but it's ultimately, it comes down to, I'm just creating, I'm just splitting a lot and creating a lot. You're not saying that I can build on that lot. That's ultimately the zoning enforcement agent that says, you can build on that lot. That's not this board's authority.
I'm not suggesting that you can build on, the state law says you have to have frontage on an adequate way. We find that that's not an adequate way.
Well, I already have a house here, so I'm just creating a separate lot, so...
Okay.
That's your job here, is determine if, does this lot have frontage? Yes, it has frontage on a way. Does it have, the remaining lot have adequate area? Yes, it does, so.
The determination the board is, once we take the vote, that it does not have frontage on an adequate way, as required by the law. We're going to take a vote, we may, so I have a motion and a second, starting to my left.
Aye.
So you're finding that it, to deny for a lack of an adequate, frontage on an adequate way. Ms. Gleason?
Jane Gleason, aye.
Ms. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Corbett?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. The application is denied, 500, for a lack of frontage on an adequate way. Next item on the agenda, discussion and possible vote, Phase One As-Built Drainage Certification, Baypoint Windward Pines. Mr. Welch, you're going to come forward and... Can you, while, introduce yourself, raise your right hand, and swear that the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Say your name and?
Charles Welch.
And spell it, please, for the record.
W-E-L-C-H.
Yeah, it makes Patty get your name right. Okay, thank you. I'm going to just make a couple of opening remarks to remind the board where we're at. I believe the last meeting that we had on this was in November, on November 25. Mr. Welch, or the applicant, had submitted as-built plans dated October 30. Mr. Cudaro reviewed the as-built plans and sent a letter on November 7. The request from Mr. Cudaro's letter was on the as-built plans. There were two issues related to basin one and basin two having different storage volumes from the approved design record, and there are two catch basins that are routed into basin two instead of one, which changes the operating parameters. At that time, I believe the agreement was that if the applicant could provide a stamped, certified letter from the engineers stating that it may have met, I can speak, met the conditions, that should be adequate. Mr. Cudaro is not here tonight. I don't see him. So I believe that the applicant has submitted a letter last week from Principe Engineering with the engineer's seal. What was the date of the letter?
It's dated March 28.
Oh, okay. We didn't get stamped on March 28, but, okay. So we have the letter certifying that these conditions, although deviating from the design, meet the design intent. Is that a correct summary of what the statement? And I know, I believe we have a representation for Mr. Cudaro, either verbally, I don't think I've seen it in writing. Mr. Buckland, did Mr. Cudaro find the stamped letter acceptable?
I don't know. I didn't receive anything from him.
Did we send it to him?
He had sent it, yes.
I did, I'm just trying to pull it up now.
Okay.
Give me one sec. Thank you.
Okay, while we're waiting for Mr. Farady, there was one other issue, perhaps you could speak to, Mr. Welch. Citizens at the last meeting were concerned about sewer cleanouts for five units. Do you know if any progress? That was not a condition, but that was a concern. There were five cleanouts, sewer cleanouts, that could not be located. Do you know if that has been addressed or discussed?
No, I didn't, I wasn't aware of that.
Okay. That was brought up at the meeting and discussed?
So...
Okay, so we have no update on that for the citizens who are here?
So Phil did respond to the letter. He said he would raise no issue with the certification as provided, but he did go on to say that the letter did not directly address some of the rerouting of the drainage. He said that that took place during the construction, but one could infer from the letter that Thomas is looking at everything holistically, and the basins are performing as intended despite the change.
Okay. All right. So I think, based on this letter, based on Mr. Cudaro's response, we are not going to get as-built plans that specifically detail what was constructed and how it was constructed. We do have certification from a professional engineer stating that it will meet the design specifi, is that, again, I'm looking for you to confirm that I'm summarizing correct, that will meet the design specifications. And again, without Mr. Cudaro to back that up, do we have any input from the Planning Office recommendation?
I think that you can find in favor of the applicant in this case.
Any other comment, Mr. Welch?
Nope.
Okay. Any discussion, questions from the board? Mike?
So he's looking up for us to vote to sign this off?
This is Phase One. This is the remaining items on Phase One, which have been outstanding for some time. We've been working through the process.
I feel a little bit more comfortable if Mr. Cudaro gave us them.
Well, he did. Josh read, unfortunately, he's not here, but has he stopped coming to the meetings? I thought we had requested that he attends meetings.
I don't know that. I'll remind him of your request.
Yeah, I mean, we have these kind of questions that come up. We're going to have another big application later on that is?
Yeah, I think he's been, I know lately, he's been attending via Zoom, but I'll remind him.
Is Mr. Cudaro on Zoom, John?
No.
Okay. Okay, that would be adequate as well. Okay. All right, so we'll have to go based on town input from the Planning Office and our judgment.
I guess I'll be quiet for a while. I don't trust anybody, you know that, Kyle.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but given the letter from Mr. Cudaro, that he's looked it over and?
And we do have a stamp?
We've got a stamped and signed letter.
So the engineer stamped the letter certifying?
Right.
His statement, so his seal is on the line.
Yeah, I feel the same way, based on Jane's comments.
What's been put in front of us.
Certification and letter, yeah.
I'm with Mike.
Okay. You're going to remain silent, or?
No, I'm...
Okay. All right. So we need to take action. I believe the requested action would be to make a finding that all, I'm going to state this out loud, Josh or Ken, you can, we're going to make a finding that all the requirements for Phase One have been met. Is that with this, with this last item? Is that correct? That's where we're at, right?
That's correct.
That's what you're looking for? Is that correct, Mr. Welch?
Correct.
Yes. Okay. So I'm looking for a motion, making a finding that with the letter submitted from Principe Engineering dated March 28, and the confirmation, even though we had questions for Mr. Cudaro, that he found the letter acceptable, that we can find that Phase One for Baypoint Windward Pines, and I don't have the project number, I apologize. Oh, yes, I do. Nope, it's not on the agenda, but, that we find Phase One complete. So I'm looking for that motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Ms. Gleason, a second from Ms. Moran. So this would be a positive vote, is affirmation that we would find Phase One complete. Mr. Baptiste?
No.
Ms. Gleason?
Jane Gleason, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, no.
And the Chair votes aye. So we have 3-2-0 in favor of finding that Phase One is complete. I don't know, Josh, do I have to sign something? What do we have to sign? I don't, I don't think Sony gave me anything to sign, so.
We'll put together a letter stating that, and you can come in and sign it in the office.
And I will state that this continues to be a very unsatisfying process, but...
Okay.
Be that, that's a, that's a off-the-record remark, or?
Taken too long. Taken way too long.
Yeah.
Right.
So thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you for being here. That helps. All right, so that's Windward Pines. All right. The next item is an informal presentation by the, by a potential applicant. I don't believe, Josh, we don't actually have an application yet, correct?
Correct.
So a potential applicant would like to present a concept about canopy solar at 100 Rosebrook. I think they're looking for our feedback and comment. I believe, Josh, they've all, they've had preliminary design review with the Planning Office, is that correct?
With the Planning Office, and they've been in front of the Conservation Commission.
Okay.
Informally.
Informally. So we'll hear about that. So anyone from the applicant here who would like to discuss this?
Good evening all. Stacy Minihan with Beals &amp; Thomas.
Okay, when you're set, I want you to spell your name, raise your hand, and you're giving, you're giving professional testimony, so we need that to be... Now, are you an engineer?
No, I'm a professional wetland scientist.
You're still giving?
Working at an engineering firm.
But you're giving professional testimony?
Yes.
So I would like you to spell your name, raise your right hand, and certify that the testimony you're about to give is the whole and complete truth.
Yes. Stacy Minihan, S-T-A-C-Y-M-I-N-I-H-A-N-E, and I do so certify.
And this gentleman, are you also a professional engineer?
No, sir, I'm the, I'm the potential applicant.
Okay.
My name's Hank Wemet.
So you're not giving any professional testimony or engineering testimony?
Correct.
Correct. Okay, thank you. Could you state your name and spell it for the record?
Sure. Hank Wemet, O-U-I-M-E-T. I'm with Renewable Energy Development Partners. We're the potential applicant, based on some feedback we're hoping to get tonight.
Great. So thank you for coming forward. I think this kind of discussion, before we get too far into the process, can help more successful projects going forward. Are you going to make a presentation? Who's going to make the presentation?
Sure, I'll be doing it, Mr. Chair.
Okay. You're going to, John, can you see the board? They're going to, obviously, they have, there's no handouts, but are you going to be able to see what's on the board there?
Actually, I was looking around, yeah.
Okay.
That was item one. We did submit a letter to, we, as you mentioned, we met with Mr. Buckland, Mr. Farady, I don't know, probably two months ago now, on a preliminary, preliminary basis, just to go over the concept, and they recommended we appear before you folks and the Conservation Commission, so we've done that with the, with the commission. We did submit just a little fact sheet on the, on the firm and on the projects. I have some copies. I'm willing, I'd be happy to hand them out if that's?
Great. Would you read into the record the date and the name of what you're handing us?
Sure. I'm about to submit a letter from my firm, Renewable Energy Development Partners, dated April 9, 2025, to the Wareham Planning Board, reference this potential project on Rosebrook Way.
Thank you. And Josh, a copy of this, if, should there be an application, we'll get this posted once there's a place to post it.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you. Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
This is the same one that, yeah.
Thank you.
Collaboration of what was?
Yeah.
Yeah, previously sent.
Yes.
Okay.
So just by way of introduction and background, my firm is a, we're a locally-owned solar developer, been in business since 2010. Actually, one of our very first projects was here in the town of Wareham for the Wareham Fire District. It's a project on fire district land. Off of, the name of the road escapes me, but...
Hi, Dan.
Hi, Dan Road. No, not.
The today.
Was it?
Charge Pond Road. Charge Pond. Okay. You got to hide, Dan?
Yep. So that was back in 2012, 13 timeframe. I don't think we've been in front of the Wareham Planning Board since then, and I suspect your solar bylaws have, have changed and evolved over in the interim.
We continue to try and respond to the changing technology and environment.
Sure, which is appropriate.
So if you submit, Josh, they're going to be under, well, depending on when you submit, we're going to make changes. Will this fall in the B-Dod district?
I believe it will, yeah.
Okay, all right, so that's a big change we're about to make, so that would be the first concern if?
Yes, yes, it is in the B-Dod.
Right, which is, which is why Stacy's here to keep?
Presuming that it gets approved at town meeting.
Fair enough. So we spent a lot of time initially, earlier in our development history, working with municipalities on public-private partnerships for solar on low-value land. Closed landfills were the things we focused on probably the first five or six years of our existence, which, you know, it was a perfect fit. The land didn't have any really benefit. It was a, it was a liability on the town's balance sheets at that point, and so converting them to a solar generating resource and generating some revenue from the town made a lot of sense. The landfills kind of got all, you know, spoken for after five or six years of development, and we moved into, we have a lot of, we're both locals, we have pretty extensive connections in the agricultural industry, so we started working with agricultural landowners to develop solar projects. And our kind of design and development approach has evolved over time as well, and what we have, our goal has been to find sites on agricultural land that will meet a multiple of objectives. One, where the solar project won't take farmland out of farming. So that's the first priority, just to keep the farmland being farmed. We're also sensitive to tree clearing, or at least excessive tree clearing. So we're trying to find sites where the, the land has already been developed in one way or the other, and we're trying to add a complementary use, a complementary solar use that's compatible with the landowner's needs, long-term needs. And so a project that we've, I think we're the only ones, we're certainly the first ones in the state to do it, and I think we're the only ones to date. We have three of these projects up and running to date, and in short, they are solar canopies installed above agricultural canals. So the canal stays in use as a canal. The agricultural function of the canal remains, and we simply use the airspace above the canal to put a solar array, a long linear solar array along the length of the canals. The feedback from the landowners so far has been very positive. Like I said, it doesn't, the solar footprint doesn't hinder their farming operations, it doesn't tie up land or make it ineligible for farming. The way we design these elevated canopies is such that the canals can continue to be maintained, continue to maintain their purpose, and they don't impede with agricultural operations. So if you, the handout I gave you, if you just flip to the first page, there's two or three photos. There's, the first photo is one of our operational projects taken from a drone, so you can see that it doesn't look like a typical solar array. from a drone, so you can see that it doesn't look like a typical solar array. Typical solar array is a big rectangle or, you know, covering a few acres. This is a linear array that follows the alignment of the canals. And if you look at the next few photos, you can see it from a side view, and you can see how it is elevated above the canal, allowing the canal to continue to serve its agricultural purpose. It's also high enough so you can get in there with equipment and maintain the canal, mow the grass under the, on the banks, et cetera. And then the last photo shows how, how these projects get installed. It's a, it's a very low-impact project. There's, there's no site work involved, per se, there's no clearing of the land, there's no need to push dirt around and regrade it. We're following the, these are existing canals we're talking about, and the, the support piles for the canopies get driven right along the edge of the road, right along the edge of the drivable surface, and we use an excavator with a hammer, the piles get dropped into place, and then a crew comes back with scaffolding and erects the superstructure. So we think they're, you know, the, the projects are low-impact from a, from an operation standpoint, but they're also relatively low-impact from a construction standpoint. They're, they're making use of, of land that's already been developed, and they're making use of airspace that isn't currently used. So that's the concept in general. We've, like I said, we've been working exclusively with agricultural landowners on this solution. We have three up and running. We, we work with a landowner here in town where we've done some other solar projects, and they have a potential site on Rosebrook Way where there's an existing agricultural canal, and we'd like to explore the possibility of, of permitting and constructing a project there. And just to be direct, we're here to get frank feedback. We're willing to pursue it, we'd, we'd like to pursue it, but if there are fatal flaws associated with it, now's the time, we'd like to hear them, and we'll go find some, some other canals to work on. And that was the, the presentation we had with the Conservation Commission, there's, you know, by the nature of these projects, you can tell that the work we're proposing, the, the canals themselves are resource areas, so we are in the buffer, and we're within the, the whatever.
The no-touch of the conservation.
So we would require a waiver from the Conservation Commission to do these projects, and we feel that we, there's, there's compelling evidence to grant those waivers, but we approached them just with that question, like.
Great.
If, if a waiver's not on the table, then we'll go somewhere else.
And what was their feedback?
They, I, I didn't wanna put words in their mouth, but, and Josh can speak to it, but they were, I think it was very favorably received. We, we didn't submit an application.
Right, they were open to the concept.
Correct, correct. And we haven't submitted an application yet, and they reserve the right to review it and make whatever decision they want, but they were open to the concept, and they thought it was a, it sounded like they thought it was a good idea.
A good alternative to the projects that we have seen.
Great.
So with that, I will turn to the proposed site where we're talking about putting these in. I have, sounds like you didn't, I have to be able to see that board, and some folks won't be able to see it.
Well, spin it, spin it around, and so John and the people in the audience can see it, or, or maybe you could take one of those and circulate the, the plan to the audience as well.
Sure, let me see how many I have, but.
This is fine.
Yeah, this is fine.
Yeah, we're, we're good, so.
We're fine.
We're good with eight and up by eleven.
Yeah, if you wanna circulate it to our citizens.
No one else needs a full-size.
We're, we're okay for right now. For the concept, we're, we're okay.
I'm also presenting the area on the screen.
Oh, very, it's on the screen, so.
I don't have the layout of the panels that is presented in the panel.
Are you gonna speak to the board, then you?
To stay in front of the microphone.
No.
I can point as, as you're talking.
You wanna rotate that a little bit.
I was, do you want pointing, you or the audience?
So we could maybe both see it as best we can.
So we can see what you're talking about.
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so just to orient you, the, the board and members of the audience, so what you're looking at is an aerial view of Rosebrook Way and the bogs on either side of Rosebrook Way, right behind the commercial district on Route 28, and behind the, what's there now, the Five Guys, and the, and there's a lumberyard. I grew up a couple towns away, I should know all this by heart, but I don't, I apologize. So the facility in the, in the top center of the, of the plan is the assisted living facility, and then what you see is Rosebrook, which is now an agricultural canal essentially, and that runs right through the middle of the, of the plan here, and those yellow rectangles are what we're proposing as the solar canopies above the canal. So you see there's seven separate arrays that would be arranged linearly along the canal. Just a few things to, to get at directly, like I said, the, the pluses of these projects from our standpoint are very limited site work, no tree clearing, and a reuse of developed land. The downside is they're tall, so the high side of these canopies is about 15 feet high above the grade of the canal roads.
15 feet, okay.
15 feet. And therein lies one challenge, which is hiding them, so.
Screening is a requirement in the bylaw.
Right, okay, so there's no way to screen these to the point where you wouldn't see them from a public way, namely Rosebrook Way. You could, you could mitigate the views with, we've, in, on another project where visibility was an issue, we painted the steel piles, so they weren't galvanized, they didn't, weren't like a reflective metal surface, we painted them brown. And in some cases, we can do some selective plantings just to break up the views, but there's no practical way to screen these from, to make them invisible from the public way. And there's no practical way to make them invisible from the assisted living facility. There's some, there's some favorable grade there where the assisted living facility's looking down on these, but just to be direct, if, if.
So that will be a challenge that we need to work through. Have you talked to the folks at the assisted living?
No, we didn't wanna, right, we didn't wanna, we didn't think that was appropriate, but.
No, no, I was just wondering, yeah.
Yeah, so the feedback we're looking for is if it's, if it's a fatal flaw to not be able to screen these, then we'd like to know that sooner than later, because we, we won't, there's just no, there's just no possible way.
That's fine.
I think outside of the screening, Stacy.
Setbacks, are you gonna be able to make the setbacks?
We can make all the setbacks, all the dimensional requirements in your bylaw, we're able to comply with. And again, I know that conservation issues are separate, but we believe we can comply with all the commission's requirements. So, and there's no, there's no new road building. You can see that the, the electrical infrastructure associated with this project is represented by those, there's four little brown rectangles.
Is there a battery associated with this project?
Nope, there's no battery storage, sir.
That's a, that's a good thing for the moment.
Well, easier, certainly.
Sure.
The project is, and the reason there isn't, not, not because we don't support battery storage, but we frankly just recognize that it's really difficult to get permitted, and the state has an exemption if you're below a certain size, so this project would be 500 kilowatts AC.
Okay.
And those projects aren't subject to that mandatory battery requirement, yet, at least. So these, these, what I was saying is these four brown rectangles represent ground-mounted electrical gear transformers and switchgear, similar to what you have outside the building, you know, green boxes on a concrete pad. So that's what, that's, those are the only, between the canopies and those four green boxes, that's the only infrastructure that we'd be developing.
Where, where would the can interconnect or the, out to the distribution go? Where would those lines run?
So Rosebrook Way has buried electrical service currently, and the utility would extend their existing underground electric down Rosebrook Way close to where those four boxes are in the public.
So there would not be visible overhead wire?
Correct. The only thing overhead is, is the canopies, which are substantially overhead. So, I don't think.
Look, I have, we'll, we'll ask questions, but keep going if you're done.
No, I don't, I don't, there was nothing else, I, we wanted to flag the visibility and screening issues, 'cause that's the biggest thing that's shouting at us, is like, can we do this? But happy to answer questions.
I have a question.
Sure.
It's really fundamental. I'm curious how you selected to go over the canals, which, as you note, are, are resource areas, and why not select something like going over the existing roadways? The dirt roads that connect all of the bogs?
Cranberry operational issues so far. We're, we're working on that. We've thought that as well as a, as a potential solution, but we haven't been able to solve it quite yet.
Yeah, it seems that there are more roadways than canals, and, and that a roadway is perhaps a little less sensitive than a, than a canal.
Well, so the main issue, the, the, the main response is what I just said, is that the operational farming issues have been something we haven't been able to solve yet to both our satisfaction as the solar owner and to the landowner's satisfaction. Also, I would say that these projects take a long time to develop, solar projects just in general, and up and, even now, the current solar program in Massachusetts doesn't have a incentive category for solar canopies over dirt roads.
So, oh, but over the bog, would this be part of the SMART program, then?
Well, this would be part of the SMART program, yes, well, that would be the, that would be the intent, but the current, the, the way the SMART program is currently structured is solar canopies are only eligible if they're over parking lots, pedestrian walkways, and agricultural canals.
Right.
Not roads or dirt roads or anything else.
Same on them.
Yeah.
Right, now.
Now, there is a, there is a walkway around this area.
Not familiar with it.
Is it the agricultural access roads that you're referring to, what surrounds the cranberry bog?
There are hiking, hiking trail, people hike regularly around the outside.
That's just the road, yeah.
It's just the road, but it's, it's sort of listed as a hiking, hiking.
So the, you know, this, we've been developing these projects for a number of years, and the ones that we've developed so far have.
Have been over.
Under, have been slotted into those, in those silos. You know, if the state changes those requirements, we're, we're already exploring it in anticipation of potential changes, but at this point in time, building them over the bog roads wouldn't work.
Yeah, it's so interesting that it, what were the, what were the three?
Correct my former name, Stacy. Parking lots, pedestrian walkways, and canals.
Canals being the only resource area.
Yeah.
So interesting that they chose a resource area.
They've been pushing solar over agriculture.
And I, I get that, but.
And to clarify as well, the work is not actually, well, in a lot of cases, it's not in a wetland or a bank resource area, it's in the buffer zone.
I got a question when you said that. 90% of the bog canals don't have fixed roads on either side or fixed banks. How are you gonna justify, or how are you gonna?
How you gonna ask?
90% of the bogs don't have banks. This is an ideal situation here.
So, so this is actually, and I think some of the other projects that they've done are not on the canals that surround the cranberry bog? Is that what I'm understanding your question relates to, where you have the cranberry bog bed and then the perimeter ditch? They're not putting them on those perimeter ditches, they're putting them on the external canals that feed the system.
I think your quest, your question was about proximity of a roadway to, to access and to install and to.
Not the roadway, the canals itself. Most bogs, I don't know how familiar you are with cranberry bogs.
Yes, very.
Most bogs do not have nice dykes like they did on both sides of the canal.
Right, you have to find a, an appropriate site that fits the siting criteria, which is, which is this one.
Looks like this one has.
We had bogs, bogs before that they wanted to put solar on, I think it's a great idea on top of the bogs, they hide, they oscillate 15 degrees either way. Conservation said, no.
Yes.
All of a sudden now, because ADM wants to put solar on their dykes, are we gonna change the whole, whole tone now?
Well, that, that project was different than what they're proposing today, but that, again, that's a, that's a different board.
Still in the same neighborhood, and the thing is, it seems like solar, depends who addresses what they wanna do with solar, whether it's good or not. You know, same rules for everybody.
Well, I think the solar over bog, and without digressing too far, was denied.
That's correct.
It was denied and appealed and.
But I, I, I meant it was overturned on appeal.
Yes.
Is that correct? The state said solar.
You may build it.
Yes, I'm sorry, that's what I was trying to get to.
Yeah.
I was saying that.
Yeah, no, I was.
In a roundabout way, but, yeah.
Yeah, just to, Mr. Baptiste's correct.
Do you have that project that's in Rochester now? Is that yours, up on Snow's Pond?
Not on Snow's Pond.
On that, off Neck Road?
Off of Neck Road, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, Snow's Pond's a little further over.
Further off.
I'm just, yeah, but I.
And in that case, you're, you're correct, there's, we've, we've looked at miles and miles of canals that have not been.
The new concept of bogs, like, you go in the Midwest, everything is perfectly square, the water graded, you know, you got nice dykes on both sides.
Yeah, they have a lot of land, we don't have that.
Right, our bogs were built, you know, you follow the contour of the land. And 90% of the bogs, like I said, canal's on one side, and the rest of it's all swamp. There's no one, no one held you can get along there.
Yeah.
And what's your span width?
Well, so like I said, the only canals that are suitable for our solution here are ones that do have dike roads on either, on both sides of the canal. If, if they don't, then this solution doesn't work. And the, this is a custom design, the span is about 33 feet, and so if the canals are wider than that, it doesn't work. If the canals are significantly narrower than that.
The canopy's at 38 feet, so there's a little bit of overhang, is that what's going on?
It's more like, it's, it's more like 34 and a half, I think it's like a foot and a half.
I was saying 38, but whatever it's.
Does it say?
Approximately.
What am I missing? Okay, well, you're right, I, I stand corrected, we're bigger, bigger solar panels. The last one we built was, they keep getting bigger.
Yeah, that's a bit of a moving target.
But the, the intent is that the piles themselves are not in the banks of the canals, they're on the edge of the road, so piles here, and then the slopes in the canal, and if the canal geometry doesn't accommodate that, then the solution doesn't work.
The concept, I think, is great.
Yeah.
Definitely got some issues to work out.
Yeah, I have questions on runoff from the panels, PFAB, what, what type of panels are you proposing, given it's a highly sensitive area? Decommissioning, are you familiar with the decommissioning requirements? We're working, working forward on those, but we are very sensitive to decommissioning.
We have fairly stringent decommissioning bond requirements.
And then really, the maintenance of the area is very important as well. So if you could speak to some of those, some of my concerns.
Sure, you might have to remind me of, of all those.
Runoff, pan, the panels, the runoff.
Okay, so let me start runoff. Essentially, we're not, we're not creating any new impervious areas with these structures, we're creating elevated shed roofs essentially, so, and when the arrays are built, and you can see it in the pictures, I mean, let me point you to one. If you look at the first picture after the one with the, the aerial, this one here, you can see that between each solar module, there's a gap, about a quarter to a half-inch gap. So what happens in reality is you've got five panels across the truss, and there's a gap between each panel, and whatever rainfall hits Module A runs off and falls into the water below through the gap, and the same thing happens on the next panel. So the only time where there, the only runoff that doesn't fall into the canal or into the banks is the runoff off the last panel, the lowest one, and it's one panel's worth of runoff, and in our experience so far, there's not even noticeable, like a drip edge. You can't find any evidence of erosion or, but, but to be clear, and I'm not representing myself to be a civil engineer here, and we would, we would provide documentation to prove it, but there's no increase in impervious area, therefore, there's no net increase in runoff to manage.
And I, we, as Carl had alluded to, we're all dealing with the developing science, learning every day, literally, what we need to be asking. And one of the concerns, and I know some of our citizens, we've had many projects in front of us, are concerned about some of the developing concern around the panels themselves, what they're made of, made.
Heavy metals, nanopolitics.
Yeah, so I think it's, it's, this is, yeah, this is a, a very positive way to handle solar, but that would be, that would be something we'd like you to address, is dealing with what we're now learning about, particularly as the panels age. Today, the, some of these projects, we assume, will be up for 25 years, so as things happen, panels deteriorate, heavy metals, others slough off, so have you addressed that in other projects?
Well, we've, just two responses. One is, the panels themselves are designed to be in an outdoor environment for 25-plus years. They're solid-state, there are some trace heavy lead, for instance, and, and heavy metals, but it's mostly silicon and glass and aluminum. I, I don't, I'm not, I don't have sufficient expertise to speak to the global concerns about solar panel and toxicity.
So in your application, should you go forward, please be prepared to address that issue.
Well, what I would, if I just maybe humble enough to suggest, if the board has, if you're reviewing a number of these solar projects, it might be more effective and efficient for, for developers like us to contribute to a fund so that your, the town has an engineer, I'm sure, to study these issues on a global scale, because we're just, we're just developers and.
I, I understand that, so great, yes, we're, we're looking for ways to do that.
Right.
I'm only, I think Julie's just trying to give you a heads up.
Yeah.
Should you move forward the application, please be prepared, rather than, than, oh my gosh, we didn't think of this.
Right.
Citizens are going to raise these questions and want to know what panels are going to go in, what their composition is.
We can't commit to using panels, for instance, that are PFAS-free, and we, we would only, these, these projects take a long time to get permitted and built, so unfortunately, I can't sit here and say, oh, the panels we bought for this project are X. They don't get purchased until right before construction.
However, however, it would be conditioned on approval, there would be a standard that you would have to meet.
And that's a framework that I think we'd love to participate in, we'd love to have, you know, here's, here's what you are required to do, and provided it's like industry standard or not even industry standard.
We're trying to, we're trying to work with our developers to come up with these standards.
It's very, it's difficult for us, as we're developers, I'm not a, I'm not a scientist, I can't, I'm not a toxicity expert, I can't.
Great, well, these are challenges that we as a board are struggling with.
And I think we all recognize that this is so much an evolving science, and we're all trying to understand the development, so we appreciate your interest in working with us on that.
Sure. And again, you know, just because I'm in the business and I, I do my own, I'm curious about these things as myself, I know there are thousands of solar projects installed across the country, tens of thousands, I think. And I'm not aware to date of a, like a single instance of a, like a groundwater contamination issue associated with a solar project, if there, like, love to read about one and what the basis was.
You would need, we would ask that you would submit evidence to support that statement, because we have citizens who are submitting counter evidence.
But I think that's, I think, again, with due respect, I think that's a great role for a third-party engineer, and we'd be happy to, like, contribute to fund their fees to do that, but it's.
Thanks. No, no, we're just discussing right now.
Right. So ma'am, you, we talked about modules. Oh, decommissioning? We've, we've provided decommissioning bonds with every single project we've ever built, and we have to comply with the town's bylaw.
Did you share with them the standard we're trying to implement?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay.
No.
It's $450 per megawatt?
It's, it's, I, I was aware of it, it's significantly higher than ones in the past, but it's not a, I don't think it's a deal killer.
These are things to just be aware of.
That was number three.
And then maintenance of the area.
Yeah.
Maintenance of the array or maintenance of the ground?
Really, both, but, but particularly, I mean, starting with the ground, starting with plantings, what's your process, all of that.
So, ground maintenance would be, continued to be done by the landowner, because this is an active agricultural area, so we wouldn't expect anything different than what currently happens, periodic mowing. There's no, like I said, there's no new site work or infrastructure that requires maintenance, unless we, if we did wind up putting some plantings perhaps around the equipment pads or something like that, that would be our obligation.
Sure.
And we would do that, we typically bond the, the viability of the plants for the first three years or something.
All those are things, we standard conditions, we apply.
And then maintenance of the array itself, I'm sure you've heard this before from other solar developers, there, there really is no maintenance of the panels or the array, there's replacement of.
Yeah, inspection or replacement.
Correct, which we do on a routine basis, we, we fly the sites every year with a drone and a thermal camera, and the camera picks up even the tiniest little imperfections in the modules, and then, then they get replaced, because it's in our interest to have a fully functioning facility. Outside of that, no, there's no routine maintenance, the, the electronic equipment is mostly solid-state, or the only moving parts in any of the equipment are cooling fans, which occasionally break, but they pop a new fan in, and that's about it.
I believe that was everything. I thought two of them were combined, between the kind of contamination concerns and the panel type.
Right, so just in your application, be prepared to address that very thoroughly.
That's it for me for now.
Sam?
I think it's a great idea, there's no batteries being, being concerned, no man clearing. It's, it's an interesting concept, something we've had before. So, I think it's very interesting.
I have several questions, starting with what's the timing for your interconnect with the Plymouth Study Group?
Well, I was hoping you could answer that question.
Well, it's going to be four years, right, minimum?
Yeah, we're not, it's not.
Where are you in the queue? Have you even got into the queue?
Oh, we, we have a pending interconnection applic, agreement, where we.
Because.
We're exempted from the, the group study for this project.
You're exempted?
Because of the size and location.
Okay, so you do have an, because the application requires that you have an interconnect.
Application, agreement?
That, we're trying to fix that, but right now it says that ever source whomsoever has acknowledged that you're doing this.
Well, they've, they've, they've done a, an individual project study of the project, right now we're just working with them about where specifically that interconnection will be, but there's no, we, we don't have to wait for a group study, and we don't think we have to wait for capital improvements to be made to interconnect.
Okay, that would be an additional important aspect to confirm with your application. And Josh, we, we didn't get to the point where, we didn't, we were working on change to the bylaw to require the interconnect agreement, but we did not actually get that far yet. So, we just need certification from the utility company that they're aware that you're doing this and they didn't have any objections yet.
Correct, we can certainly provide that.
Sort of a rough summary.
Right.
Okay, so we talked about the interconnect. Visual screening is going to be a problem, that will require variance. Fencing, right now, I think we have modified the bylaw so that we, we can, the planning board can waive fencing if we find it, it used to be required. So I think the new bylaw says we can, we can waive it. So we'll just be clear on what the fencing requirement is.
The proposed bylaw?
Huh?
The proposed bylaw includes that waiver allowance or the existing?
It would be existing today.
Yeah. It allows us to waive.
Okay.
And what is the metric for you, because a, a fence would essentially kill the project?
Well, no, it, we're fencing, the concern with fencing is twofold, one is safety for small children and whatever. The other flip side of fencing is critter mobility, so it needs to be designed to allow critter mobility.
So one thing with this, if it's a 15-foot height of the ground, that's, it puts the panels out of.
So maybe we only need fencing around the pad or the.
Thank you for pointing that out, that's, in the, in the past, what we've done is we've secured the equipment areas, but all of the wiring for the arrays are above.
Good, so that's, that's a good thought.
And it's the same, same condition, I would think, or similar condition to putting a canopy over parking.
Right.
And you wouldn't fence that.
Yeah, right.
That's a, subject to a different bylaw.
Okay, fair enough. But this, I would think, falls into a similar situation.
Potentially.
It doesn't meet the solar over parking line, so.
Okay.
It's still, I think, this would be a large, you know, ground mounted solar array, subject to 590, is that correct, Josh?
Yeah.
But if the, if the state's sort of.
So, fencing around these panels would actually, would be a deal killer for the cranberry growers, because maintaining the canal is something that needs to be done.
Right, to address it.
It's a consideration.
And if, if the state puts it in a category with over-parking, over-walkways, and over agricultural canals, then.
That's not how our bylaws are.
Right, but maybe, maybe because what the state is doing.
Okay, well I.
Trumps us to think about that as a revision.
That's, that.
That's down the road, but still.
Right now, it would, it might, I, I think, we'll wait for Paul's determination, but it would be subject to 590 in a large-scale ground mounted solar array in our use table. Okay, well, so we talked about fencing, we talked about SMART, we talked about timing for the interconnect, it will require some variances. The pad, the electrical equipment, sound screening, sound studies, we are concerned, direction of the sound, certainly sound emanating toward the assisted, these, these electrical boxes do, do have sound, and we have specs for the, the sound conditioning. So it may need some screening or some sound buffering or, but we'll, we'll look for sound studies and, and.
Okay.
What about, I guess we don't, the only fire access would need to get back to the pads. These, these canopies won't restrict fire access along those roads, right?
Correct.
Will those canal roads meet the access requirements for the trucks?
We'd have to look into it.
Yeah, we have to look into that, yeah. But you would need to be able to get fire trucks back to the electrical equipment, correct?
Typically, on all the cranberry sites that we've worked on in other communities, the, the vast majority of the existing sand track bog roads meet the fire department requirements.
Yeah, we, that's just, you asked for questions, I think about, so.
Looking where it's hitting.
Okay, so visual screening is an issue that we need to consider and work through. You did note that from the American Assisted Living, there's a downslope, is there a potential consider for putting screening right at the top of a slope along that edge, which is elevated already? I, I, I'm just throwing out ideas, you've got to think about landscaping and screening and.
We could put some landscaping, again, to mitigate, but I don't want to sit here and say that we could block the views.
Fifteen feet, yeah, well, go out and plant the fast-growing pines and poplars now. Those are just, what other questions? We talked about the battery.
Decommissioning.
We talked about decommissioning.
Runoff.
Fire access, it's going to need a variance if we can't screen it.
Mr. Chair, can you, can you just linger on that particular issue for a second? So what are the, what are the board's requirements for obtaining a variance?
So, we're actually clarifying that in the next go-around, but right now, the way our bylaws are intended to work and will work, is that it will be a, a parallel, a, a joint process. So you would submit your application, if it requires a variance, you would go to the ZBA to get the variance, or not, but to get the variance, and then you would come back here for site plan review special permit.
So it would be a zoning variance that we would get?
Yes, yeah, you need, it would be a zoning variance, because it's a zoning bylaw that that sets the screen.
And I think zoning variance is typically, you need to prove hardship, you need to, you need to demonstrate that there's no possible solution.
Well, there is, there is no possible solution on this.
Yeah, the hardship is, for zoning is based on the unique characteristics of the topography, soils.
Correct.
I don't have it fully memorized, but it's site-specific, so I think.
I, I can't guarantee that you would get it, but that's the process, you would go for a, a variance on this specific requirement in the bylaw, you would go to the zoning, ZBA.
First.
First.
Yes.
I think that's the way, the order, you were doing the, the flow chart, Josh, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
They get, you'd get the variance, and then you would come back to us for site plan review special permit. And we work together.
And conservation.
Huh? Well, conservation is a whole, you've got to do that regardless.
Right.
So I agree that this is the kind of concept that I think the town is looking for, we're not cutting trees down, or at least a lot of trees.
It's in the district, it's in the B district?
It's, it's in the new district that we're trying to concentrate solar development. I don't think it's going to hurt the turtles, so I don't know if there's turtles or wild white.
We don't know that.
Huh?
We don't know that yet.
Well, there's turtles everywhere, so we have to worry about the turtles. Yeah, so, and presuming that, so one of the key requirements in the bylaw, and it's 595, this is disturbed land, so that was a key, a key incentive, we're looking to put it over land that's already been disturbed. You're not, you're not going to take something that's middle of a forest, and, so that's, those are all positives. So there's some hurdles, but I think, I, I don't see any reason not to encourage you to at least continue to consider the development.
I agree 100%.
Agree, absolutely.
So, I don't think we need to take a vote, but Mike, I think you said that in the beginning as well.
I think it's a good concept, yeah.
So.
Fair enough, well.
This was very helpful.
Yeah, very helpful, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have tons of hours of solar applications if you want to look at, or you could stay, Mr. Shanahan's going to come up later on and talk about his solar project, so.
Stay for a good moment. Yeah. Thanks again.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. All right, we have two administrative items in this section. I'm looking for a motion to reaport, reappoint Sam Corbett as the planning board representative to the capital planning committee. I'm looking for a motion and a second, and then discussion.
I'll move.
Second.
I have a motion from Jane Gleason, a second from Julie Moran. Any discussion?
Nope.
Okay with you?
Any discussion? Okay, we just need to know what we have to do, should we approve this, who, we have to send the.
It's just a letter to the select board.
Yeah, okay, we'll have to, we'll have.
Any questions?
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, roll call vote, starting to my left, all in favor? Mr. Baptiste?
I, Mike Baptiste, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
I abstain.
Okay, and the chair votes aye, so we have the motion to appoint Sam Corbett to the, as the planning board representative of capital, capital planning committee, carries 401. Similarly, I'm looking for a motion to reappoint Mr. Corbett to the CPC, Community Preservation Committee. Motion and second, I'm looking for.
Uh, it's a motion.
Motion by Jane Gleason.
Second.
By Julie Moran.
I'm assuming that.
And discussion, any discussion? I have a motion, a second, any discussion?
Good job, Sam.
Hearing none, I'm looking for a roll call vote, again, starting to my left.
Mike Baptiste, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett abstaining.
And the chair votes aye. The motion to reappoint, or to recommend the reappointment of Mr. Corbett as the planning board representative to the CPC, carries 401.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Sam.
The next item, 1024 Wareham MA3 LLC Site Plan Review Special Permit, 91 and 101 Farring Hill Road, Wareham, Massachusetts. Welcome back.
Thank you very much.
Just state your name, for the record, spell your name for Patty.
Joseph Shanahan, S-H-A-N-A-H-A-N.
Thank you. It's been a bit of time since we have last met, we do have a couple of business items, but do you want to make any opening remarks?
No, I believe the only two items that are still on the table are the town council opinion and your engagement with Mr. Pachowski.
There may be a couple of others, but great.
Those are the only two I'm aware of.
No, that's good. Did you see the letter from town council, the email? Did you forward the email from Rich, which basically supported the position that the planning board is the site plan granting authority under 1510, 1520, and 590, and that this is a special permit with, excuse me, site plan review with special permit?
Josh did forward the one-sentence email to me, I received it.
That's what we got.
I do want to put on the record that, first of all, after waiting eight weeks for that quote-written opinion, I was a little disappointed, I certainly disagree with that. I'd also put on the record, Mr. Chairman, my objection to that determination by this board, and obviously reserve my right to.
You, you will deal with that as you must.
Thank you.
And that is your right, and we accept that. So I don't think we need to take a vote on that or anything. So that is put to bed. We'll talk about Mr. Pachowski then. So we wrote a statement of work to Mr. Pachowski, which he responded to. His estimate was 32 hours of work at $325 an hour. I believe you had some concerns about that, but before we listen to your concerns, do we have any discussion from the board?
I noted his concerns. I think that they were helpful, they will be helpful to all of us. I disagree that we are really satisfied with the review. I think that this is a project that is, a new project, as far as I'm concerned, as far as we're concerned. I think that there are unique issues around its citing, unique conditions relative to environmental profile, the neighborhood where it will be placed, surrounds, the impact of a BES system that we really don't know make model, any information. I also think that the BES system is a concern around fire suppression, what are the mitigating measures we could require? So I think that it is not merely a review. I am looking for Professor Milos, Milos to provide us with a comprehensive set of requirements. So I feel that this is a very much a site specific review and documentation that we're looking for.
Any other comments from the board?
I would agree with Ms. Moran's comment.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, my, my only supporting comment would be, as we, as we have heard from previous applicants, although you're much more mature than several of them, it's likely that you won't be able to necessarily tell us the exact equipment that you will put in, although you may be able to. We would, we would like to be able to appropriately condition, based on scientific evidence, the performance standards, which we would like to establish. And then again, before I ask you for your comment, I have a question, one thing, and I would hope that perhaps Mr. Pachowski could weigh in on. We are current, because of the sensitivity in several areas of a catastrophic event with the battery and the potential impact from fire suppression, we are, I'm going to ask you a question in a minute, I'm going to make a statement and ask you. We are trying to come up with standards for a vault system to surround the Connex containers. So we're trying to come up with a standard that would make sense. Have you or any experience with vaults around batteries for containment?
I've never heard of such a thing.
They are, they are beginning to be developed and discussed.
For large, large battery storage.
Large battery storage. Basically, and again, that's why we're, if we were to condition it, we would like to understand the efficacy in, but basically it's a concrete.
Oh, I know what a vault is.
Oh, okay, but that would, that would be the concept that would be able to.
Later, we'll all be familiar with.
Yes, yes, no, no. But the concept would be, it would be able to handle all of the water that would be dumped on a fire, should that be the choice, the fire department. And what we would be looking for is input from him on, is that an efficacious approach for?
Not only containment, but also being able to submerge, basically.
Well, yeah, no, no, yeah, yeah, but it would be higher than the Connex container. You'd flood, you'd flood the vault. But you don't have any, any particular experience, nor do we. So that would be a question we would like to, to at least get discussed.
Can I just ask one more question? And again, I'm, this is a new application for me. My understanding is, Mr. Shanahan, you have a, you have an executed interconnection agreement?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
So they're not subject to the delay.
No, I understand. So.
We've submitted that to the board.
Yes.
Okay, yes. So that's why I'm wondering, one of the, one of the ways that the documentation all would be flowing through and looking at is the exact make model, or at least description, a, as comprehensive as it could be, description of the system.
Do you know what battery equipment you would put in at this point?
Given that you, you're not waiting for an agreement?
Because of the market and because of what's happening politically with the tariffs, there is no way any solar developer can tell you.
Which is exactly what I expected you to say.
Okay, yeah.
And that's, that's what we're, we're finding.
I wanted to ask the question, okay.
We need to find a way to set performance standards then, if we were going to condition an approval. And we need, we need help for this specific application.
Which, I.
So, go ahead, now you may make your comment.
Mr. Chairman, is part of my concern about 32 hours and a $10,000 bill to review this BES system. I understand what your concerns are. Clearly, Mr. Pachowski is not going to review and report on this particular BES, because we're not providing the specifications, so he cannot review it.
Right, so it would be a, it would be a conceptual, I don't know, or an engineering.
And I would respectfully suggest to you, because of those circumstances, both for my project and any other, if the project's approved, you could condition it on the fact that once the BES is established, the specifications must be presented to the planning board. And at that point, you may want to have them reviewed by Mr. Pachowski.
Would that be an acceptable condition for you?
Yes.
I can tell you that we presented that to another applicant, and they flat out refused to do that, so.
I mean, if I knew what it was now, I'd have Mr. Pachowski review it for you now, but I can't.
You're exactly in the same place we are. Other applicants have said, we don't have to tell you.
Well, so. And let me do this. We may meet, meet, reach a middle ground that'll solve my problem and my argument. If in fact, we get to the point where the project is approved with that type of condition, and Mr. Pachowski's further review of the specifications of the BES system to be used is included in that 32-hour, $10,000 bill, I have no problem with the bill. But right now, and I've been doing this a long time, and I've done a lot of BES systems, there is nothing Mr. Pachowski can find to do for 32 hours.
Except he can help us write performance standards to impose as conditions.
Correct.
Yeah, I think, I think that's the goal, is to get some sort of performance standard that you can, that you can aim at in your selection of the product.
What he is going to do is what your fire department did two and a half years ago, and will continue to do. The performance standards of the National Fire Protection Association Standard 855 is the nationwide accepted blueprint for BES system security. And he's going to come back with that. I just don't want to pay him to copy and paste it.
Well, it certainly won't take him 32 hours to do that either.
That's my point.
Well, he won't bill us. Josh, this is not a flat rate. If he doesn't take 32 hours, he wasn't going to bill us 32 hours.
Is this a not to exceed, a cap?
It would be not to exceed, well, it could exceed if his review exceeded that, we would request that he tell us.
But it's not, it wasn't a flat, it wasn't a flat.
Not a flat fee, no.
Right.
Normally, your 53G accounts are funded to what it could be, and if there's any remaining, the applicant requests that those funds be returned at the end of the project.
Right. So I didn't read it to say that he was going to spend.
Again, if you're anticipating that type of condition, and Mr. Pachowski understands that he will get a further bit of information, if you will, for review and comment, and that's included in his contract, I don't have a problem with that.
Josh, what do you think about the proposal from the applicant? We need standards to.
Yeah, we do. Well, and every project's different, and this is a project that is sensitively cited. So it's in our discretion to request that, and.
No, I understand.
I feel that I am in favor of requesting that. And I think that we will see what the number is, but I just feel like we need an expert opinion, and he's the resident expert on this.
I think it's fair.
It seems to me that as a, as a cap, that it makes sense, but I appreciate what you're saying, that the review of the final product could fall into, under that same cap.
We'll see where it goes, right.
My only concern of that is if at the time when we're presented with the battery system, would there be enough funds remaining to do that work? It may require.
I think we'll have to.
Additional, right. It may, it may require additional funds.
Yeah, you'd have to amend the contract.
Have to visit that when the time comes.
You'd have to amend the contract anyway, right.
All right. So for the record, as we think about conditions of approval, the right to return to the planning board, once you have the exact equipment that you're going to install, and we work together to properly condition.
I think that makes sense.
That equipment.
It's not unlike a condition you already have with regard to landscape screening.
Yes.
We have a proposed plan in, but per Charlie's recommendations, after it's all installed, you have the right to go and look at it, and if it doesn't get the job done, you can come back to us and ask us to revise it.
Can you, can you discuss this with Mr. Pachowski and?
Yeah, I'll send him an email and.
Presuming, I'm looking for a motion, then we would like to ask the applicant to fund up to 32 hours at $325, subject to Mr. Pachowski's confirmation that he understands that approach.
Yeah.
And that, that 32, the 53G account would continue to exist, and if the funds remained, we could then use it for additional study.
If there was funds.
Or you could give some of it back to us.
Oh, no, no, absolutely. Any, any on yours 53G, money goes back to you.
So just to take.
I've appreciated all those checks you've sent me over the last four years.
Take one step back, when you were talking about the vault requirements.
Yes.
I had done a.
Yes, you were going to reach out.
So, so I've, I've looked far and wide, I can't find a community that's actually imposed those conditions. But when I started to think about it, I was thinking about, well, realistically, how much room would you need on either side of the battery system? And when I, I came to a, an approximate number for this battery system itself, without accounting for batteries, so I'd say an empty vault. The vault took over a million gallons of water to fill it to the top, and based on the ability of one engine truck pumping water into it, it would take eight and a half hours to fill. Now, granted, the battery systems are going to take up a considerable amount of space, but it's just, just a thought, just some information.
And I think you're aware of this. Number one, too often, the word catastrophic event is thrown around. There's never been a catastrophic event, never.
I disagree with that point, but okay.
Not for this type of a system.
Okay, we can.
Second of all, all this discussion about putting water on the BES, you don't put water on the BES.
I, I agree, but the fire department would not say they wouldn't.
Correct.
We won't allow them to, so they can't. It's not a matter of they. That point is, you can't tell us, is what they told us.
All we want to, the, as you understand, our concern is.
Oh, I understand where you're going.
If they put a million gallons of water on that, it's going to, it's going to make a mess of everything. And that's what we're trying to think about.
Do you have any idea what a million gallons of water is, Mr. Chairman?
I, I, yes, I can conceive of it.
There are some burning BES systems that have, in New York for one, two, it was two million gallons of water.
But in any case, we're trying to address this concern.
Yeah.
Ms. Moran, you're, you're citing a project where that happened. What project are you talking about?
It was in upstate New York, early.
We can get the.
Yeah, I'm happy to provide that.
I don't think it's fair that when I present a fact, I'm required to substantiate it, but the board can make allegations.
No, no, we will, we have believed that we've substantiated that on the record, that evidence was submitted.
Correct.
In the record, but if not, we'll make sure that it is.
Yeah.
You're absolutely right.
Yeah, agreed.
We cannot make unfounded claims, and we will, if.
Provide that.
If we can substantiate, we will. And if we can't, we'll acknowledge that we can't.
Yeah.
Two other things, Mr. Chairman, because we're on the subject, and I'd like to introduce them into the record. Coincidentally, reports that came out just within the last 30 days from the American Clean Power Association, the first of which, and I won't read it, but I will tell you that an impartial third party did a study of incidents in New York, and have come back with the finding that battery fires found no public health concerns from environmental contamination, but more can be done to ensure energy storage system safety.
Can you read into the record the?
The title is Battery Fires Pose Minor Environmental Risks, ACP, which stands for American Clean Power Report.
Dated, dated?
It is dated April 1, 2025. And one other entitled Battery Storage Industry Unveils National Blueprint for Safety, dated March 28, 2025. The findings indicate that no impact to public health or surrounding communities from the incidents studied. So I'll give those to Josh.
Thanks, and we'll put them on the record and make them available to you.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
That is the kind of discussion we need to have.
Thank you. And I have nothing else, Mr. Chairman. I believe you do.
I'm not sure that I do at the moment.
Not right now.
So we have an action for Milos. We've agreed to disagree on the site plan special permit, but we're going to move forward under that, that assumption, and.
Just had a question, Josh. I know that we've all been waiting to move to this next step. How is, did you get a confirmation from our expert, how quickly he could engage on this?
No, that question was never posed.
Okay, we might, just to give our applicant a.
Yeah, I guess, it sounds like I have some questions to ask him anyway, so I'll make that one of those questions.
Yeah, please, if you could include that, okay, thanks.
And possibly, although you wouldn't necessarily have to come back, we have a meeting next week, we could read out on that if I put it on the agenda. You could just zoom in if you'd like. So I'll, I'll make sure we put it on the agenda, so we can at least make a statement.
And I'm sure Milos is going to need three weeks, four weeks to do that.
Whatever, okay. So.
Just want to make sure his schedule is, he can slot us in, yeah.
The other item I did want to discuss before we turn to the public is if and when, or not if, when we close the public hearing and move to the next phase.
That's the first time I've ever heard you acknowledge that that's a possibility, Mr. Chairman.
It must, we will close this.
Hopefully soon.
Yes, and it, I, I think at this point, although we'll continue to get input, there's not a lot more, hopefully, that we're going to learn unless some brand new discovery comes out, but we're, we're going to continue to take input. The point I was going to move to is, at our last solar project, we trialed a process, we, when we do write a decision, we need to base that decision on findings of fact and conclusions at law, and also then imposing suitable conditions. The last time, we trialed a process, allowing the citizens to provide their input to the board, which we then, the board would distill and assimilate, we also afforded the applicant the same opportunity, and that would then feed into a decision document, which we would then review in a public session, an open meeting, not a public hearing, but it, because the hearing would have been closed. And that would be deliberated in open meeting, so that everyone could hear all of the material and hear the deliberation. And my, my request to the board is that we continue that process. I have distributed to the applicant and to members of the board, I understand there were concerns about the rigors that I designed into the process, but I'm open to consideration. It wasn't a requirement, but I was trying to prepare a guide. So is there any comment on that, or we want to, is there any thought on continuing to use that process?
Yes, I think, I think it was very helpful, yeah.
I would agree, it was very helpful and very open and transparent and all that.
Yeah, and the applicant in that case was an active participant, so that was helpful.
Was, was engaged, Mike.
Mr. Chairman, I saw your email today, which I appreciate you sharing with me, and I reviewed the minutes from when you went through that process, and I agree that's.
It's something you.
Very well organized.
Something you would be glad to participate in.
Absolutely, yeah, okay, great.
Again, the citizens will be invited to participate, and as always, they're, they're invited to provide comment on the process as well. So barring any further discussion here, is there anyone in the audience or the ether who would like to speak?
I would.
Okay, the lady in white, the white sweatshirt, you have to come forward.
Oh, okay.
Come forward, state your name, spell your name, your address, yeah, to the speaker. And that's also that Patty, when she writes the minutes, she gets all that.
Okay. Jacqueline Galloway, J.A.C.Q.U.E.L.I.N.E.G.A.L.L.O.W.A.Y.
And your address?
64 Farring Hill Road.
Great, thank you. Please, you have a couple of minutes to address the board.
Wareham has its own uniqueness, and every section, every section is special to its residents. The Farring Hill neighborhood is no different. I've lived there for 16 years, and I've seen the habitat, I've seen the animals, you know, that I, I never even thought that I would see. Turkeys, deer, foxes, skunks. I don't see them anymore. I don't see them outside, hear them outside my window in the morning to wake me up. You know, that, that's special. And I miss that. Sitting out on my porch in the summer and listening to all the sounds of the forest. It just amazed me, and it made me comfortable and relaxed. Finding out what a loon bird was. I never knew what a loon bird was. There are trails in those forests, besides the animals that live there. And personally, they're gonna be extinct anyway, but we don't have to rush the process, do we? I'm sure a lot of my neighbors feel the same way. And this is the first time I've ever had a chance to come to a meeting, and I thank you for letting me express how I feel. And carry on.
I wanna thank you for coming out. If, we, we try and get more citizens to come out. It's a very complicated, and we've been doing this, I think, six years now, I think, on this application almost, so. Thank you. I'm appreciating your, your coming, and thank you for speaking from the heart.
Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to come forward? Ms. Wertz. Please state your name, spell your name, address, for the record, please.
Patricia Wertz, 30 Taft Street, Wareham. What else?
Wertz. Spell it so we.
W.U.R.T.S.
Thank you.
It's a terrible last name. If you can think of a better one for me while we do this, I'd be happy. So I ju, I have a question, actually, Mr. Shanahan.
Through, through the board then.
Through the board and to the board, so decide who could answer best. Is the last time I was made aware of what the plans were in adjusting the ground in order for this site to be developed, was that the, the design was to take the watershed that typically, there's two rivers that surround this, this piece of land, more or less, so it certainly play off the two sides of it. The watershed on one side fills the Wee Weanic. The watershed on the other side, ladies, what's the name of the?
Sipican.
The Sipican. And the last time we saw that plan that I'm aware of is that the design was going to take the watershed that would be off the Wee Weanic side and feed it out through to the other river, therefore drying up the Wee Weanic River in certain, in a certain amount of significant watershed. Now, that river is a major outlet to the ocean. It also feeds the land where the diamondback terrapin, which is a very protected species. It's the number one area, according to the people who do that work, where the terrapin mate have their nests, et cetera. If you come and you walk the, the sand that's around just where I live, that Wee Weanic part of the sand, those turtles are nesting all over there, and that's their major place. The design, if for the, the solar farm, or whatever we're calling it, solar facility, is if it is going to take that watershed from that side of the, the land, that river's going to dry up. And there are other sites along that river that are set up for taking care of the land, et cetera, certain ones that have been put off. So this, and I, I bring it up because if, this has been going on for six years, I'm aware of at least five of them, and there's.
Here's the rough.
There's, there's eight to 10 different things that are critical about this piece of land. This is one that hasn't been talked about recently, and it's getting real close to, oh, yeah, and I forgot that. So please keep that in consideration.
Thank you.
Just, you can come forward if you would like to speak, but the, the, on the record, we commissioned, the board commissioned and the applicant-funded hydrogeologic study by Horstley Witten that describes the flows, and that, that information is contained in that report, which is on the website. What else did I wanna say? So yeah, I, I can't speci, the, the, and I'm, Mr. Shanahan is standing and he'll speak. I, I believe the overall flow is moving the water to the left side of the hill as you face it. I think that's.
And where are you standing at the hill when you're looking at?
When you're looking from Farring Hill Road, up at the, up at the hill. But I don't, and the flows and the amount of flow is all stipulated in, in the study. In addition, the applicant redesigned the site to do terracing and flow control into catch basins. That's all been documented and designed and will be part of the final.
So I'd really like to ask that you all get out and review that in detail, and let us know what you find, because the last thing I heard is it was going to be detrimental to the Wee Weanic.
Thank you. Mr. Shanahan, did you wanna make any comment? You're not required to.
No, needless to say, I do. The entire presentation was based on a faulty premise.
Which, which?
I don't wish you that.
Her presentation? Oh, not, not Horstley Witten's presentation.
No. The idea that there was every plan that was setting up a stormwater system that would dry up the Wee Weanic River is absurd. There was never such a plan. And I'm not criticizing you.
It wasn't listed as, it was planned to dry it up.
May I finish the answer?
By action, it was.
May I finish?
Yes.
Please, let's not direct all, excuse me, Ms. Wertz, direct any comment through me and Mr. Shanahan through me.
And I'll repeat what the chair just indicated. It's not a matter of the planning board getting out and reviewing this. It's not a matter of the abudders spreading rumors of false information about this. This board acknowledged that they are not experts in the field. As a result, they engaged a world-renowned hydrogeological firm to review the plans that are before it tonight.
And that's, that's what our decision will be based on. As you said, Ms. Wertz, we will review that.
That firm signed off on them, and I'd also point out that the town engineer, Mr. Rowley, was also engaged to review the plans, and he has signed off.
Thank you. The, yes, that will be the, that plan, the plan of record, Mr. Rowley's recommendation, that study will, will serve as one of, and we will include it in our review, which was your ask.
I appreciate that, but if this issue is not dealt with directly in that plan, I'd like to ask the committee to look at it again. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and I wanna thank Ms. Wertz. One of the things that I've been trying to ask citizens when they come forward, well, please, make a passionate, heartfelt statement, but if you have an ask, be clear what the ask is. And you, you've said you want us to confirm that, that it deals with that issue, and we will look at it. Anyone else? I don't see anyone, anyone else? Ms. Hayes?
Please, Eddie.
Passion, you know I do.
Eddie, please.
Please.
The windfall.
Name, name, spell your name, address, please, and then.
52 Farmers Lane, Annie Hayes, H.A.Y.E.S. is my last name.
Thank you.
And I would start with my ask, which is that we assert that, not just because I say so, but new things, astounding things have happened in the realm of ability to see what's going on, and what's going on is horrific. This article here was published in, it's from the Times, New York Times, it was published, the research published in Nature Magazine, and it says that the, you know, the toxicologists are all buzzing, because from going, going from being able to see nanoparticles, the smallest particles, at 5,000, you could see 5,000 of them, now there's a machine, or machines, just a few of them, very costly, that can see 200 nanoparticles. So that, last summer, there was the information about the water bottle, the liter of water that had 240 nano, excuse me, micro particles, 'cause that's what we've been talking about, very small bits that are the size of a sesame seed, that's a microparticle of plastic. They thought there were, they counted 240 with the old machine. And then when they used the new machine, there were 240,000 bits of nanoparticles, which are so small, they're unseen. And the way you can calculate them from what we know, we don't really know what an atom of gold is, but three atoms of gold is one nanoparticle. So we're talking about close to or at atomic level, and certainly at molecular level. So now, all of the stuff that is being seen is such as what is in this article. And I wrote an article for the Wareham Week that you'll probably see, I don't know if they're putting it in tomorrow, but it's to go over this because, let me, I'll get to that in a minute.
When you're making, just read the date of the, when you reference an article, just the date of the article.
This one is April 8, 2025.
Thank you.
It was last Tuesday.
And it was from, from Nature or New York Times?
Here's the name of the article. What are microplastics doing to our bodies? This lab is racing to find out. And one of the bits of information that they give, part of the racing verb, is that there are, approximately is a good word, because they're really seeing things, five bottle caps of water in our adult brains now. The plastic companies, which are basically fossil fuel people, I remember maybe a decade and a half ago, hearing them say, well, you know, we're, you know, they're starting to think about maybe not using so much fossil fuel. We're gonna pump it into the plastics, and that's exactly what they've done. Every decade to 15 years, the amount of plastics doubles. And there, I mean, there are just so many striking bits of information. Let me see, this one. They found that human brain samples from 2024 had nearly 50% more microplastics than brain samples from 2016. So what is that, eight years? Doubled. The other thing that I forgot about, the, the nanoparticles that they can see now in the water bottle is, when they said there are 240,000 microparticles, 90% of them were nanoparticles. And another article that I quoted for the paper was the New England Journal of Medicine. They found carotid arteries have nanoparticles that atomic, near atomic size in them, and they can go past the blood-brain barrier. And that's how our brains are accumulating this stuff. So what they found in that study was that people who had had a major heart incident and were found to have nanoparticles in their carotid, had four times more likelihood to have another major incident in the next three years compared to people who did not have. So there are all kinds of new studies that are coming out that change everything. So, I mean, for example, when Mr. Shanahan speaks of the fire is, you know, studied not to create any major environmental mishap or, or concern, when you're burning stuff that's at this smallest level of chemistry, the air is, the air we breathe has nanoparticles in it, the water, the soil, the whole, the whole show. So we're eating it, it's coming off of our clothing, it's in our contact lenses, that's the PFAS, sorry, that's PFAS, and some contact lenses. It just goes on and on, and it's horrifying. So when I got into looking at panels a couple of years ago, I was first looking to see where they were manufactured, because I was interested in the prohibition against having panels that were manufactured by slave labor, the Uyghurs. And then I started looking and, and kept looking and looking, and now I'm starting to hear about coatings. Well, what are these coatings? Because they're on the surface. I remember, remember Long Road, Cadmium Telluride was saying, everything is so nicely neatly sealed, it's never gonna get out, so don't worry about cadmium. It's a tiny, tiny bit less than the, the dimension of a hair, and it just won't get out. Well, you know, we pretty much accepted that. I mean, you know, they kept saying it and saying it. And now, the nanoparticles, the microparticles are infused in nanotechnology, which all the panels are just crazy about. I mean, the, the internet just, with information about, everybody has got the latest edge in the amount of energy that they're making from their solar panel because of their, they don't often, well, sometimes they don't say nanotechnology, but it really is a buzzword for the industry. And then you look into it, and it's titanium dioxide, silicon oxide, it's zinc dioxide. And then you go to the health sites, and you see what health people, scientists are saying about the possibilities of toxic reactions in the human being. They're already having connections, and I'm not saying definitive, but they're seeing connections between Parkinson's, Alzheimer's. I mean, you can just imagine, if this stuff is getting into your brain, it's in placentas, it's in a newborn baby's first stool. I mean, I mean, I just.
You've got, yeah.
You got the idea.
So just.
Okay. So what do you want from me?
No, no, no. I mean, you're, but speed, everybody.
I can't wrap this topic up.
Everybody gets it.
You've given us a lot of stuff.
Pardon?
You've given us a lot of stuff.
And the article is in the paper, so I'm very concerned. I appreciate your, I hear the word nanoparticles, I hear the word coatings, I hear the concern, and I'm very glad for that. There is so much to learn here, that I, I think this is just a whole new thing, and it's going to take a lot of learning and conversation. So I appreciate that we're all on this together.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks so much. Eric. Excuse me, that's my job.
We didn't know if you could see him. He's hiding.
Mr. Lintala. John, is there anybody on the web outside in the ether?
I have one.
Okay, so after Mr. Lintala, we'll go to the ether.
There was a woman with her hand up, too.
Is there someone on the left side?
The third, there you go.
So one more, and then we'll go to the ether. Please, if you're gonna hand it out, read it to the record, please. First, state your name, spell your name, and then if you're handing it out, read what you're handing out. Read the title and the date of what you're handing out.
Eric Lintala, 15 Square Island Road, West Wareham. That's E.R.I.C.L.I.N.T.A.L.A. This is the proposed findings of fact referencing zoning bylaws 2019, town of Wareham, April 9, 2025.
Thank you. And you're handing that.
Yeah.
Hey, Eric. Did you also submit it to the planning office?
Yes, I apologize. To get this in on time, there was a snafu, so I'm just handing this out, but this will be on site.
Thank you.
but this will be on site with better photographic images.
I believe the enclosed detailed information taken from the public records on this project, 2121 SPR 91 and 101 Ferring Hill Road withdrawn and attachment 2021, July 7th, or 0726, amended resident comment Lentala will help to inform the planning board to render a decision not in favor of this project. I'm submitting additional information clarifying issues I raised in my letter to the board dated July 26, 2021 concerning issues specifically to water and flooding and the zoning bylaws of 2019 that pertain to this project. Bylaw page 46, application item 593.4, sentences 1 through 15. Quote, "A storm, stormwater management plan details existing environmental and hydrological conditions of the site for the protection of water quality and protection from flooding," end quote. "Under present day normal rainy day conditions, basements flood, backyards become swamps, septic systems become vulnerable to private and private wells become of a concern. These concerns have been presented as board by many residents around Ferring Hill on many occasions." Item 593.5, quote, "A description of the solar energy facility and technical, economic, and other reasons for the proposed location and design shall be prepared, signed by registered professional engineer," end quote. In reference to location, design, and prepared by registered engineer, it brings into question whether there was any thought or concern as to the other existing solar field located off Squirrel Island Road and directly behind the residence of Ferring Hill Road. I would think that having two solar fields in close proximity would have been of some concern or question. This issue has been also raised many times at the planning board meetings. Attached, you will find several exhibits. Exhibit A is a satellite view of Squirrel Island Road. This is not included because the next exhibit B is much better to look at. Exhibit B is an overhead map showing property lines around solar field. And this one's important to look at in relation to the other images. Exhibit C is the holding pond, northeast corner, looking south, the solar field. Exhibit D is the holding pond, northeast corner, looking north. Exhibit E is looking southwest through flooded woods. Notice the top edge of the solar field panels.
So the, excuse me, these are existing for a different project? The holding ponds don't exist for the, this project?
Not for this project, but this is, I'm coming around to this.
Okay. No, I just want to make sure I'm, know what I'm looking at.
This is the Ferring Hill or the Squirrel Island Road solar project you're looking at.
Thank you.
Exhibit F is looking west through the wooded flooded, flooded woods. Notice the top of the solar field panels. Exhibit G is looking south through wooded flooded woods. House on Lot S4 is just visible. And the last one, Exhibit H, is the water entering the culvert west side of Squirrel Island Road. The photographic exhibits I have included show where a large portion of the water that comes off of Ferring Hill and through the residential properties along Ferring Hill Road ends up. This area includes three lots directly behind the Ferring Hill properties, one being my own, the other two are wooded and wetlands. The building of the Squirrel Island Road solar project has created a damming effect to the water coming off of Ferring Hill, especially with the construction of the holding pond in the northeast corner with its high berm. The areas shown in Exhibets C, D, E, F, G, and H have standing water the majority of the fall, winter, and spring months, including the summers at times. The small covert pipe that goes under Squirrel Island Road in front of Lot S4 only drains a small portion of the low-lying areas shown in the photographs. As stated by Mr. David Pichet, West Wareham's Conservation Administrator, past Conservation Administrator, quote, "Based on the information provided and the comments from Neil Price of Horstley Whitten Group, the study concluded that the project would result in an increase in runoff towards the homes, but the increase would be considered minor as conservative estimates or assumptions were made for this study," end quote. "Any increase in water above what already inundates the area could be disastrous to the surrounding environment and to the residents who live there." Common sense tells you that this poorly sited project, a project proposed to be built on a hill.
Thank you. You don't have to, but what do you, what would you like to say?
I might, I might prefer in that that you prefer I don't.
No, no, I mean, he made a statement which you could, do you want to refute that? Is that what you want to do?
I disagree with it completely.
Okay.
How do you disagree with that?
Eric, please, so I believe.
I'll tell you how I can disagree.
Okay. But I don't want to get into a debate. The time for that would be during deliberations.
Ms. Chair, as you quote, nearly six years, I've sat in the audience and listened to people get up who have absolutely no qualifications to render the opinions and the allegations they make. And more often than not, I sit there and I listen and I trust this board to go through what they're hearing and make their own decisions about it.
Right, and that's a good statement, and I want to interject there. And that's the reason we're going to do the open discussion of the findings of fact, so that it's.
Then we shouldn't have done this right now.
No, no, he's just submitting it. We haven't, we haven't, this is input to that process.
I'm going to state again, Ms. Chairman, because people seem to want to ignore it. The last sentence, "Any increase in water above what already inundates the area could be disastrous to the surrounding environment and to the residents who live there." Common sense tells you that this is a poorly sited project. I don't know where the common sense is.
That is the, the citizen's input, which we will deliberate on and consider.
Totally contradicted by your expert, Horstley Whitten. And I just want to point that out.
Thank you. We're not going to get into a debate back and forth. You've submitted your thing, the applicant commented. When we come to the final, we have to sort through all that. Yes, ma'am? Put your half to. You must, now, you must. Name, address, spell, spelling, all the above.
McKenna Fitzgerald, M-C-K-E-N-N-A-F-I-T-Z-G-E-R-A-L-D, 89 Great Neck Road, Wareham. My big question, which I haven't been to every town meeting, so I don't know if it's been answered. What is, where, theoretically, you put solar fields down, where is that power going? What is the point of destroying our town and tearing it up and affecting the environment in order to supply solar power to somewhere that's not even near here?
Okay, it goes into the grid and electricity flows through the grid through the entire eastern half of the United States. The US electric grid is divided into two parts down the middle of the country. The western part is one grid, the eastern part is the part, and once an electron gets on the grid, it just goes wherever it goes. And that's the way generation works.
Does that matter who owns the solar fields?
No, doesn't. The electricity is put on the grid, there's a meter, they get paid for the electricity they put on the grid, and it flows through the grid. That's how electricity works. I'm speaking non-technically and very broadly.
Yep, that's all I wanted to do.
But yeah, it goes onto the grid and it becomes an electron and based on potential, which is the difference, and it goes wherever it goes.
Thank you.
And you've already spoken, so we have other people. John. Ms. Chase?
Yeah, hi. My name's Julia Chase. Apologies in advance if my toddler chimes in.
That's okay. Spell your name and give us your address, please.
My name is Julia Chase. I'm a resident of Kingston, Massachusetts. My partner lives in Wareham, and I'm uncomfortable giving my address.
You, you must, I believe. Hang on, wait.
She lives in Kingston. She's saying her partner lives in Wareham.
Okay, so, all right.
It's a Wareham address, the partner. I don't know.
We always ask for an address. I'm not sure what the bylaw says, but I'll, it's fine. Go ahead.
Thank you. So catastrophe was a word that was mentioned earlier in this meeting and was brushed off. So I'd like to bring up the fact that we are in the midst of escalating climate catastrophe. I say this as someone who has worked side by side with some of the top climate scientists in the world at the Woodwell Climate Research Center just down the road in Woods Hole. They will tell you that one of the easiest ways to protect our communities from escalating and inevitable climate impacts is to keep forests intact and trees standing, both to sequester carbon, provide desperately needed habitat for wildlife, and mitigate against flooding in our communities. Relatedly, we are also experiencing rapid species loss globally at an unprecedented scale. And deforestation and land degradation is one of the major contributing factors to this unprecedented map's extinction. So as a mother and as someone with climate literacy, there's no justification, in my opinion, for deforestation regardless of whether or not it's for solar-related projects. It's my opinion that we must keep remaining ecosystems intact. They are our first line of defense against escalating impacts of climate change. Catastrophe is relevant, and it should be at the center of every single land use decision that this town makes. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else? Yes, sir.
I believe there's one other person.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead.
Isabella.
Yes, Isabella, can you state your name and address for the record, please? If, we can't hear you, so I'm not sure.
They're unmuted.
Can you hear me now?
Now we can.
Okay, so sorry about that. So thank you to the planning board for the opportunity to provide public comment. My name is Isabella Gamble. That is I-S-A-B-E-L-L-A-G-A-M-B-I-L-L. And I would kindly remind the board that under public meeting law, you do not have to provide an address, and I am not comfortable doing so. My family does have a home and resides in Plymouth County.
Are you not a resident of Wareham? Is that correct?
I'm sorry?
Are you a resident of Wareham?
I'm a resident of Plymouth County.
Okay, well, all right, I'll.
Thank you so much for your consideration of my comments. All comments that I offer tonight are solely my own, although in my day job, I work to move equitable climate policies forward at the city and state levels in Massachusetts. In addition to uplifting and fully supporting residents' concerns related to this project, I also wanted to offer two reminders and one recommendation to the planning board for consideration. First, as the planning board might be aware, there has been quite a lot of work at the state level in recent years to try and address the conflict that we're seeing today between renewable energy development, particularly solar, and natural and working lands. As you might be aware, the Commission on Clean Energy Siting and Permitting offered a series of recommendations to address these conflicts, which were then codified into statutory law last November. As the planning board might be aware, the intent of this law was to prevent what is happening tonight, looking at existing forest land for solar development when there could be other opportunities available. I would also remind the planning board that in the 2023 Design Guidelines and Performance Standards for the rules and regulations that the planning board operates under for the town of Wareham, on page four, under both sustainability and resiliency measures, this project would be in noncompliance of both. It is not sustainable to clearcut an existing forest and carbon sink as the previous public commenter noted, and it would also severely mitigate the town's opportunities for climate resilience around stormwater mitigation, heat resilience, and additional community benefits for its cultural heritage. My recommendation would be for the planning board to vote no for this project at Ferring Hill. My ask and recommendation would be to instead look at additional properties in Wareham, particularly with large parking lots, for parking lot solar canopy. For example, there is the Stop &amp; Shop Plaza, the Water Whiz parking lot. There could be opportunities at public libraries and schools. This has been an extremely successful model that cities like Boston and other parts of the state are implementing to promote solar development without needing to clearcut existing forests like this pine barren habitat. Thank you so much for considering my comments, and I hope that you vote no on this project.
I have, I have a question and a comment. First, you cited Massachusetts law. Could you give me the citation, please, for November?
Yes, hold on, please hold. It was passed in November 2024, and it was the Clean Energy Permitting and Siting Law.
And you have the.
If you give me one second, I can get the actual bill number.
That's what I was looking for. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't have that available. One moment.
No, it just helps.
And for, for awareness, the commission that I mentioned on clean energy permitting and citing, that was created by an earlier state law passed in 2022. And then the reforms were actually implemented in what was passed last year. So it's called the 2024 Climate Act. And I'm just getting the bill number, so sorry. So the actual bill title is "An Act Promoting a Clean Energy Grid: Advancing Equity and Protecting Rate Payers." It is under Chapter 239 of Existing Sessions Law, under Section 30 of Chapter 7C of the General Laws, and then it goes on from there. If it would be helpful, I can actually email the link to this specific chapter, potentially to Sonia or someone else, if that would be useful.
That would be very useful. Thank you.
I'd be happy to do that. Thanks.
And then one comment that I wanted to make. You made reference to solar over parking throughout the town. I remind every citizen that that solar over parking is an as-of-right permit within town, and anybody can put solar over a parking lot by just filling out a building permit and meeting the, that has nothing to do.
Exactly, and it would save so much of your time, so you wouldn't have to be in these planning board meetings for years talking about clear-cutting forests. So I would really encourage you looking at large parking lots.
We can't make applicants or landowners do that. They can if they want to, but we can't make them.
I understand. Thank you.
I just want to, it's important, we're frustrated by that, but.
I just want to say it's become a really successful model, not only for solar development. You know, people really love having covered parking. There's also an opportunity to establish community resilience hubs at places like schools and libraries. But in the interest of time, I'll stop there and send over my written comments.
Thank you so much.
The planning board can't tell people where to put things.
Anybody else? I've got you. Yeah, anybody else in the ether?
No, just.
Okay, so the gentleman. Name, address. One moment, I have a question for my colleague here. I have a question for you. Under the bylaw, they have to have standing. And how can I establish standing if I can't?
In your discretion, you can allow them to speak, but generally, you need standing.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Casey Michalak Howell, C-A-S-E-Y-M-I-C-H-A-L-A-K-H-O-W-E-L-L.
Okay, I never would have guessed that. Thanks, help for helping Patty.
My address is 428 Sell Street, Halifax, Massachusetts, but I work six days a week, sometimes 60 hours, in Wareham, around Wareham. I've been working here for years.
Okay, thank you.
My, the company I work for is based out of Wareham as well. Regarding Ferring Hill, and I'm really going to try not to just say everything that everyone else has already said.
Please, yeah, we don't, we're trying to get new information.
Yes. So it, what I'm going to say is mainly from the heart, but I'm also an indigenous person from the sell shore. So when it comes to these matters and clearcutting forest, all of the rare species and the biodiversity of certain areas, this is something that myself and many of us hold on to very deeply, and we try to fight for as much as we can. You know, as, again, as many people tonight, and I'm sure at other times during these six or so years have pointed out, we're losing these things rapidly, and they will not come back. We have, you know, certain things we have been able to, to, you know, resurrect, basically, but there are things that we can't do that with. The pine barrens being one of them. We cannot make that come back. This is, that is something specifically that. This is, that is something specifically that, once it's gone, it's gone. Regarding this town itself, I've come to be very comfortable in this town. I'm pretty accepted by everyone I know here. And this experience, just hearing you all talk and actually comment back to, you know, in a very respectful manner to these concerned citizens, is, I'm not used to that. I'm used to going into a public meeting or a town meeting and being told I cannot speak or told that I need to stop speaking, barely even given the chance to speak. So I applaud you all on how you conduct yourselves with the public. Now, Isabella, the previous commenter had mentioned, you know, alternatives to solar projects. I work in construction, so I see a lot of solar everywhere around town, all over the sell shore, obviously, and people love it. You know, I see independently people on their homes and their lawns and stuff. They're cutting their bills in half, if not totally wiping out their electric bill. Now, again, someone else had commented that, and you clarified where that energy goes. You said there's two grids, right?
The country is divided, and I'm speaking very broadly.
Okay.
The two grids don't connect.
Okay.
Down the middle of the country. And I'll let Mr. Shanahan correct me if I'm wrong.
And Texas is completely on its own.
Texas is on its own. I've, I've.
Yeah, that's why they have their unique promise.
Okay.
But in general, the two grids.
Yeah.
And they don't connect because the phase, the whole kind of phase.
I, I would love if he could confirm this or not, but from what I know, there is a New England grid.
That's.
If, if he wants to speak, that's. I'm trying to clarify. I, I want more answers also, so yes.
I was speaking very broadly about the grid.
You're also speaking incorrectly, Ms. Ching.
Thank you, Will. No, no, I would.
I just want, I don't mean that in a malicious sense.
Sure.
The young lady that raised the issue said, and I think I'm properly quoting her, "We're destroying our community for whom." While I obviously disagree with the characterization of destruction of the community, I want to point out that this would be a community solar project. All of the production that comes out of this project would go to subscribers in the town of Wareham.
Thank you for, are you reminding me of that?
By the residential, commercial, industrial, or municipal.
Thank you for reminding of that.
Okay, thank you.
I was speaking more broadly about how electricity flows in the grid.
Okay, that, that does clarify for me what I need to know. And.
I didn't remember this was community.
Trying to think of anything else if I have. Yeah, I don't know, I think that, that clarifies my, my ask. But I still, I still, I know you guys can't force anyone to, to put solar on their property or business property or anything like that, but in any of you, y'all's time on the planning board, has anyone come to the town to try and figure out a way to incentivize businesses, local people, to try to put into the grid, like the local grid or whatever he's talking about?
So I don't know. Local incentives are very difficult in a town that is financially constrained. So I don't know that there are any local initiatives to, to offer incentives.
Okay. I would also just like to add, this is the last thing. Any other public commenters, any citizens here, if you would like to reach out to me or some other folks regarding environmental issues, you can just come up to me, talk to me. I will gladly introduce myself and be of any use I can be to help save what we have. So yes, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Julieanne Victoria.
Wait, to the microphone, please. And spell your name, please.
Julieanne Victoria, J-U-L-I-A-N-N-E-V-I-C-T-O-R-I-A. I live at 48 Farmers Lane. I have been there for 35 years, and Wareham is a lovely town. I understand that we have the best aquifer from Worcester to Cape Cod, which is why we sell water to Bourne, and we also sell water to other local towns. And there are currently some charges pending against local cranberry bogs, which I understand is their land, but they owe the town supposedly money because they're, they're destroying our aquifer. We have the best aquifer from Worcester to Cape Cod, which is why we can sell water to other towns. I have a well, and the purity of my well, I do get attested, has been degraded somewhat. I live, my property is a budding where this solar field would be, and oh, I really love all the creatures. Once they clearcut it, they'll all come eat all my plants. But I'm just saying that this is our town, and we cannot allow clearcutting to destroy wetlands because once the water is destroyed, maybe it'll go to the, sip again, maybe it'll go over to the wee-beantik, but I live there. I walk it every day. I was out there the other day with my son, and oh, the plants are adorable. They only bloom every seven years. They're like the corpse plants, so we cannot allow them to destroy the very tiny amounts we have. I live near the Braga property and the Westgate property, and I love all the creatures, but we must protect our aquifer. It's about our aquifer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. McHale?
Good evening. Nancy McHale, 87 Farring Hill Road. Thank you for taking my comment. I had sent a note in, in March referring to the, the noise study that was done back in 2021, and in that note, I neglected to, I was pointing out the noise levels that were never assessed within the Farring Hill Conservation Area and on the east side of the project, on the wee-beantik side. I neglected to also mention that in the process of different iterations of plans for this project, there are saved out of the original 44-acre plot that is owned by 96 Realty LLC, that they're saving the A&R lots on Farring Hill. There's like three of them, three, maybe four. The assessment of the noise levels that would be at those homes, by my math, looking at the, the 2021 study, might exceed the 10 decibel increase in noise from the solar project. So I just wanted to bring back the noise levels to the top of the list, but not quite as far to the top of the list as the climate change, as the cutting down the trees for the solar. So again, what do I want you to do with this? I would like you very much to deny the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. All right, so I don't, Annie, you've already spoken many times. Is there anything really critical that you need to say that you haven't covered already?
I would like to say something about energy consumption. No?
We're going to have more hearings, so.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we're, we're going to continue this. So. Mr. Shanahan, would you agree that we need to continue? We need to hear from Maloche. Yes, ma'am. Come forward.
Nancy Garvey, 25 Farring Hill Road, Wareham.
Can you spell your name, please?
Yes, G-A-R-V-E-Y.
Thank you.
I've spoken here before, told you that I previously was an environmental toxicologist. I was a member of CTEC, the Society of Environmental Toxicologists and Chemists. So I feel like I do have authority to speak.
So are you going to make professional testimony?
I'm going to say that I would implore you to look into what happens when a lithium-ion battery catches fire.
Okay. That's a request, but you're not making any testimony.
No, no, I haven't worked as an environmental toxicologist in 20 years.
Just if you were going to make testimony, I'd want you to swear in, but that's okay.
I looked up that fire in New York. My phone is about to die, but the fire burned for four days. If it's the fire that someone mentioned before, it took 30 towns to come and put the fire out. So somebody said, what does a 100 million gallons of water look like? Well, if it takes four days, 30 fire departments to put a fire out. And I believe the, the facility in upstate New York was bigger than the Farring Hill proposal, but nonetheless, toxic runoff is going to flow into people's yards, into wells, and into the watershed.
Thank you. And just as an accident, Julie, we need, we, we owe it to the applicant to cite that forehand.
Yeah, that's the project we talked about.
Yes. No, I, it is, but we need, we need to get the specifics.
Yeah, I'll get that.
And we had. I, I know we've talked about it in the past, but.
Yeah, we did, yeah. Mr., I think Maloche referred to it.
Yeah. Any, anyone else? I don't want to miss anybody. I apologize, I didn't see your hand before. All right, continuation. So in terms of planning purposes, the next, I will put this on the agenda for the 22nd, just so we get a readout from Josh on Maloche, but we're not going to, not planning on taking a lot of comment. It's just for that one update. The next meeting would then be the first meeting in May, which is, what, does anybody know that date?
First meeting.
Second Monday.
Who's fastest?
14.
The 14th.
14th, yeah.
Would, would that be reasonable?
That's fine, Ms. Ching.
All right. And just so, okay, it's, we don't need to bring that up. So I'm looking for a motion to continue.
It's the 12th of May?
May. What's the exact, it's a Monday.
I'm sorry. It is, it is the 12th.
It's the 12th.
All right, I'm looking for a motion to continue the public hearing to the 12th of May.
So moved.
I have a motion from Jane Gleason, a second?
Second.
Second. Discuss, it's acceptable to the applicant.
Thank you.
And so a vote? Mr. Baptiste?
All in favor.
Aye. Aye, all in favor.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
And the chair votes aye. So this hearing is continued till May 12th.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
All right, next, next item, upcoming board schedule. I do want to note, we just, we just continued this, but next week, there is a public hearing on July 22nd.
April 22nd?
I'm sorry.
You said July.
I know. It's been a long day. April 22nd on the changes, the proposed changes to Article 15 that will be voted on.
At the town meeting.
At the town meeting.
Yeah.
So that is coming up. Moving on. Everyone is, the next item, everyone submitted their harassment policy to.
Yep.
Were we supposed to get it back?
I don't know if you get it back, but as long as you send it to whoever we were supposed to send it to.
You're supposed to sign a date and give, send it back.
I didn't do that. I read it.
Oh, no, you were supposed to sign and date it and send it in.
Okay, I didn't realize.
Did you sign and date it and send it in?
I'm being harassed now.
I didn't realize I was supposed to sign a date. Okay.
Okay, so.
Did you know what the date is of that email?
Not off the top of my head, but I'll find it if you can.
Was it from Sonia?
No, it came from the Select Office.
From the Select Office?
Karen or.
Kathleen Moore.
Kathleen, it came from Kathleen, yes.
Selectments Office?
Yes.
I'm also getting something from the state, though.
Huh?
The state form.
The state is emailing as well, so.
Yeah, I didn't get anything from the state, but yeah, so I'm glad I brought it up. You need to sign, date, and return the form.
Yep.
I have.
Okay, as did I.
Even though I did it a year ago.
I did not do that.
I did it when I was appointed.
They said you got to do it again, so.
Yeah, all right, fine.
We, I don't think we need to debate it. If anybody doesn't know where it is, either Josh or I'll send it out again.
Yeah, that would be great if you sent it out again.
It has to be you. I wasn't included. It was only boards and committees. I don't have the email.
All right.
That was a while ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was.
I'll find it.
That's yours.
All right. Next item. Two members of the planning board's terms expire in June 2025. The board needs to make a recommendation, should they choose to do so, or to vote and to make a recommendation to the appoint, this goes to the appointing authority, right, Josh?
Correct.
Not the Select Board.
Oh, interesting.
It depends, it depends who you talk to, honestly.
The Select Board does not.
Right.
Yeah, it's the appointing authority.
The appointing authority is.
It was town moderator.
The chair of the planning board, the moderator, and the chair of the Select.
Okay.
Correct.
But will.
And the town administrator, no?
No.
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 No, it's the three.
Moderator.
Three.
Okay, so I have submitted my application for reappointment. I don't know if Ms. Gleason has or if she's interested. So any discussion? I would like the board to support my reappointment, and I would ask for a motion to support that.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion for Ms. Moran, a second for Mr. Corbett, to, for the planning board to recommend to the appointing authority the reappointment of Carl Schultz.
Correct.
For a three-year term.
I need to do that.
I do drink Budweiser, Kyle.
Okay, okay, all right.
Glad you're doing it, Kyle.
Any other discussion?
No, I think.
Motion and a second.
Holy support.
Roll call, starting to my left.
Mike Baptiste, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
And the chair abstains. The motion to recommend reappointment of Carl Schultz passes 401. Ms. Gleason, are you interested in continuing this wonderful ordeal?
That's sort of my plan.
Then please submit an application.
Yes, I will do that.
I would look for a recommend, a, excuse me, a motion to recommend that Jane, recommend to the appointing authority that Jane Gleason be reappointed to a term at the planning board.
So moved.
A motion by Julie Moran, second by Sam Corbett. Discussion, hearing none, a roll call vote, starting at my left.
Mike Baptiste, aye.
Jane Gleason abstained.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
And the chair votes aye. The motion passes 401. All of the discussion items that I had asked to be put on the agenda somehow got dropped.
Kidding.
So I missed that when she sent it to me. I thought the 53G account, the, the board report. Reports from the town office.
I'll, I'll take a look at those items, and I'll, I'll send it out in an email during I'm signing them.
Yeah, all right, it's not there.
I missed it.
Ask a question on the 53Gs?
You can.
A bit updated, Josh?
Oh, one other item I'll report. We did get a response from Clearway. They've recalculated the, the bond amounts. I haven't looked at it yet, but they did respond. They did come back yet again. Any update on the two projects that have not responded to our demand?
So I, I had discussions with town council and our zoning enforcement officer, and it seems that one of the resolutions of, you know, going there and flipping the switch isn't a practical thing that we can do. The ability for him to do that, it would have to have some type of life safety hazard associated with it.
Okay. What, what is our recourse?
I, I think we continue to send the demand letter and, and move that way. I think we continue to send the demand letter and move that way.
So you're saying, basically, the town has no ability to enforce its will?
Can't we, we could bring suit.
Yeah, that would be the next recourse after trying to drag them to the table would be...
Which they haven't shown any willingness to do, after a year now.
You could file an action in Land Court.
Yep, that would be one of our outcomes.
So...
Could we do that?
Sure.
A motion?
It's not on the agenda, so I'll put it on the agenda.
Thank you very much.
The moderator and the chairman.
Looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second, discussion, the only, the only discussion item is we have a meeting on the 22nd. So all in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Beftystack.
A voice...
Jane Gleason, aye.
Yeah, so 8:30, the meeting is adjourned at 8:30.
Okay. Do you know, what's her name?